The other night, finance, we upped the in-code software costs. As we get into this different billing type of thing, there's more support. One of the things that Christina alluded to was that the report that we currently send to Aberdeen for printing doesn't work for precision. So they've got to write some code to convert that into a different format for precision, which should have been done.
Performance.
Performance, that should have been done when we started the process 15 years ago. So we've been very lucky since it's actually Tyler Technologies' report that if it goes to a third party, it's not supported. So if there'd been an issue with that report over the last 15 years, it would have been tough crap.
Well, I'm just really happy that we're going to get it done locally and mailed out of our local home stuff. And we're going to have to look.
And there'll be a consumption graph on there?
Yep.
Thank you for doing that. You know, it's.
Insurance is our, that's just the general fund costs. We break out the water sewer golf course separate for insurance. Our audit costs for the 2019 audit is in there. Next page, general government buildings. Really, that's here and the food pantry. Just to give you forewarning, Stan Shoneman was here today with some contractors looking at the back walls at City Hall. So hopefully in the next week or so, we'll, we'll get a cost estimate. Stan wasn't overly positive. I think it may be some extensive work.
Did we start in the space study yet?
I've reached out to three architects for proposals, so hopefully it's on the next agenda.
Because don't we have the budget this year?
Yep. So that'll be in there and also the space study for the public workshop.
Yeah, it's Raleigh.
So that's.
See that nice green part? You gotta get a little, get a little.
Touche.
Yeah, yeah. Give us some ideas. Yeah, so that's, that's kind of it for, we're including another 80,000 for next year for hired repairs, you know, eventually we want to, we should paint the buildings at some point in time. We've got roof repairs coming in this week for both this building and City Hall.
This or next week.
Yeah, okay. But for the next few years until we replace that older City Hall, the center building, it's, it's going to be a money pit, if you ever watched that movie. Yeah. So it'll just be an ongoing, ongoing issue. The next section, engineer, got some upgrades to the GIS software, which is going to be, I would think, an ongoing annual. That includes, that includes the tokens or whatever for.
Credits.
The credits, thank you. With how we can, how we can get in and view it other than Tammy, we'll look at probably Raleigh, myself, Paul eventually.
And then getting some of the maps online too.
Yeah.
So how was it with our team, you know, trying to be able to help you out?
Big time. So we're required to have an ADA transition plan, which means we have to have an inventory of all our curb ramps and sidewalks. And so he's been out kind of doing that and kind of following the safety process because they just went through it all with Federal Highway. So hopefully that's a study that we're doing in-house that can get approved by Federal Highway. So.
Probably on the.
He is.
Twenty second.
Yep, twenty second and.
And he's doing the slurry seal right now, so.
So he's been out there doing an awesome job. Unfortunately, this is probably the, I mean, nice if we could talk him into next summer.
Because he graduates next May.
And I would imagine he's probably going to have a job lined up more than we're paying him. But.
There are more options in this issue for entry.
Yeah, we had one out of UNO the first year. Yeah. So that's an ongoing, that's, that'll be ongoing. Police.
Four parts, it's only four parts, that's all the difference.
Vehicles, can't say cars, they're vehicles.
Stop.
There's no.
Looking for cars.
What's meant with issue, a car and a vehicle?
Well, cars is an old Crown Vic and a vehicle is anywhere from an SUV to a pickup to.
Mini truck.
A mini truck? He thinks he needs mini trucks? Just one correction, the switch over to the new vehicles, the last line there should be 10,000 instead of 1,000. I thought Joe got a great deal.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that. He knows.
Too many, too many, too much 10K.
A lot of equipment has to switch over to older expired cars.
Like the cage.
The company, their downed old vehicle will see equipment.
The cage, the computer system, the radios.
But there's also line item for equipment.
That's for maybe what it might learn.
Yep. And then the, the two vehicles that you're looking at are.
I wanted to get at least one toppled larger vehicle to accommodate some larger officers. By the fact that we are larger framed officers.
Thank you.
Because we went to the two charges last year that makes Dan's like 6.5, 2.60, and it might be problematic during the charge, so I wanted to get one larger vehicle to accommodate that and allow for animal control assistance as well.
When do we get the territories?
Or do we?
When do we get those?
They're ordered May 21st, allows 120 to 150 days to live.
No, you cannot drive them.
Huh? I'll drive them back.
I just drove one of those. He likes to say they got a $213.
When you're driving mainly start.
I don't know about that.
Well, they're not, they're not fully equipped yet. They don't have light bars and all of that stuff, so.
I'll just scream out the window. Can answer questions vehicles. The current two vehicles I want to roll up, 96,000 to 140,000 miles, all that in-town traffic, so they're pretty well exhausted.
And then what do we use their?
Yep.
And we're getting rid of two SUVs, are we? Yes. That will get rid of this.
Yeah, all the Crown Vics are gone. Sad day. Next page on communications, we've got a fairly significant increase from Metro for the 911 service. And Joe's talked to them about that quite a bit, but that's, that's the number that gets spit out with the formula, based on calls, population, et cetera. And then the 66,000 for equipment is continuing the changeover in vehicles to new computers, new radios and new radars units.
60,000 for Metro.
Yeah.
What's your conversation with Joe? Is there any possibility of laying, laying a blow on that?
No, the way the formula works out is kind of set in stone. There's not a lot of flexibility. I did identify one error, which I think sold them a reduction of five, seven thousand, something like that. Basically kind of a, it goes back to what we negotiated several years ago and they're increasing their staff significantly this year. And so the way the formula looks out, it just fits this year.
So they're increasing staff. Auto service, no changes there. The, the big one that we always look at is fuel. We're, we're pretty, pretty healthy on that, but I hesitate to cut that any because as soon as we do, gas prices go through the roof. Every year that, that we've cut it, gas goes to four bucks a gallon and then we're short. Fire department, the professional services is the operations and maintenance portion of their budget for ONM. And then additional request is equipment. Those are both based off of the same growth that we have in the levy, the CPI and growth. So both of those amounts increased, the same as our levy. I did have a very brief conversation with the chief the other night after, after the briefing meeting, saying we're probably going to have to go in and revisit at least the equipment one and make sure, because it's been a while since we've looked at it. It's been about eight years, nine years since we looked at it. I just want to make sure that we double check with them that, that we're funding an appropriate level for their equipment. So they'll need to go back and look at their CIP list for their, their trucks.
Is their new building in here?
No, that'll be done this year. And then we've got 50,000 in for the ambulance standby fee, or whatever we want to call it these days.
How do we feel about that? Okay, that's.
Yep.
Why?
Yep, it's private business because they lose money on 911 services.
Again, why is that a problem?
Well, it is our problem because if they, if we, if they lose too much money on 911 services, they'll stop performing 911 services. He's got his transportation side, transit.
You mean in Brandon?
In Brandon.
That's what he tells us.
Yep.
He doesn't have to provide it.
No.
We could find other people that would come.
We could, we could talk to, we could.
I just wonder.
Yep, we could, we could talk to P+, see if they would be interested in, in staffing a rig over here, or two, or, or whatever's necessary.
I just don't, I just feel again, I feel like it's fear tactics. Like, oh, when I get done service, I don't, I don't think someone will come ride a service.
We're great, we're great people. I was researching this for $50,000. Nobody's going to touch that. You can't stay up in operation 24/7.
So other cities pay?
Yeah.
Or they wait for the ambulance to get out from the bigger city.
Oh, so they, they pay for people to do that? That's why I just, I was like.
Yeah, for him to have an EMT or a paramedic on staff, kind of on call, sitting at, at the barn, waiting for a call, he has to pay them. And then, you know, with reimbursement rates, they're not good for 911.
So does he go out to like Garrettson?
Yep, he, he's a backup for Garrettson. He does.
Garrettson pays him too.
Some of the townships are paying him. I don't know if, Garrison, Garrison has their own ambulance, Garrison has their own ambulance service. Garrison has their own ambulance service.
They do?
Yep, but he acts as a backup for that ambulance service. So if they're out on a run or they don't have the staffing, he, he will take a run in Garrettson. But he also serves kind of the south, yeah, eastern part of Minnella County.
So we've always done that?
Nope, this is new.
So that's what I'm saying, like, it was such a big thing in the news that we're paying for this, but if we got away with it for so many years, what changed now that?
Well, kind of what, what instigated it was he had a little bit of a cash flow problem because he had a couple of staff members that, I want to be careful since we're an open session, didn't, didn't perform their work and or.
But that's like a business, and that's how I felt they feel this.
No, but they provide, they provide a emergency service for us, is what it breaks down to. We could, we could theoretically get rid of not pay it. And then if MedStar were to go out of business, we would have to rely on the county to assign the city of Brandon to somebody.
But what happens, let's say, let's, I just had to think about that. We can pay him, like we did last year, if he has to do this for the services, and I'm not saying I'm appreciating it, they are, but what if he does go belly up in January and we just pay him 50 grand?
We, we pay him monthly. We pay monthly in arrears.
So then he could stop the payment.
Yep, yep. If there's no service provided, if he were to go out of business, we wouldn't send him a check.
Why don't we?
Yep.
Are we doing a yearly contract?
Yeah.
So this, I mean, the contract will come forward.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
Communications is going to be asking.
No, he's, he's told me the 50 is adequate. You know, he's still arguing with the county on their portion, they're, they're still hemming and hawing about it. But he has, and I can't remember the exact townships, I think Split Rock is, Brandon might be, and then he's got, he also serves some.
Valley Springs.
Valley Springs is, is talking about subsidizing. You know, we looked at it, I tried to look at other services in the state that were nonprofits, operated by cities, they're all losing money, much, much more than 50,000. You know, I think, for instance, Watertown was somewhere between a half a million and 750,000 a year that they pump into their ambulance service. You know, reimbursement rates, you know, if it's a Medicare, Medicaid patient, you're going to be likely to get about 40% reimbursement on the run.
Sort of attachment with the 911 service and the transporting, because. Get those transporting contracts now. 911 service. Didn't have. Oh, response.
I would just add, remember that while we gave him this money, we also made our end in order.
Okay.
Yep.
Just in the process of getting redundancy.
So that.
A whole canvas on more standards than we ever had before. There's a tie.
Yep.
But your response time?
Response time for all, all priority ones and twos is three minutes, two minutes and 59 seconds, that he has to be on scene. It's not currently.
He does, but when I added 911 a couple of years ago, and the first one there was wrong to your part.
Yep.
They were there before them.
And they still might be in there, but we've got a requirement for priority ones and twos, which are the higher priority calls, of three minutes or less that he's on scene. Now, the county, for instance, and I think even Sioux Falls, they have a response of three minutes from the time that 911 contacts, that they're en route. So they could get the call at nine o'clock and he could call it 90259 and say, we're en route. We're saying you have to be on scene.
I don't think it's three minutes, but that's three quick.
That's in the draft.
That also requires some paramedics to be on site.
Yep.
So there's a tie in there with our hand, and then there's a chance we may be able to go to the county still, talk to them about.
Yep.
The whole thing, but not just that, so that's still.
And what does that go affect?
Well, hopefully we'll get the final draft, we've got the final draft, but put it in an ordinance form probably in September, so it'll go into effect in October. Yep.
And then the other recommendation that Brett, who's here, asked that we have, is if he would come back to us and ask for more money, our recommendation would be something.
Which is probably going to be scary.
Take a risk.
I know it. So that's on the fire, building inspections. The big change, the big thing there is health insurance. Paul has notified us that he might be requesting family coverage. So that's the big change there. Traffic professional services, transportation plan, that is kind of what Tammy was talking to about the ADA ramps, correct?
Nope, this is a completely different.
Nope.
This is the one to the FBO.
Okay.
That would help with planning on our roads.
So part of that would be reimbursed?
80% of it's reimbursed.
So on that health insurance, we're going to back that back out, right? 2018?
Well, we'll, we'll need to take a look. If you remember, we said we'd get back together with our committee once Lisa came back. Well, she's kind of sort of back. But I imagine that probably next month we'll sit down with employees, make sure that they certainly understand this is negotiations or anything like that, to work through the insurance questions with the recommendation. At this point in time, it really doesn't matter what we put into the budget. We could put any number in there at this point in time.
Well, it does because if we have to start cutting, we won't have to cut as much. I mean, I think when I made that motion, I said that I wanted to go back to the 2018 number.
You did.
So, you know, that changes, but I, I have a feeling we're going to start cutting. I want to. I want to make any suggestions, figure out the question, figure out what's been working.
So we can certainly take a look at that, but if, if, if that's the case, you're looking at a 17% cut to be picked up by employees, that's.
We're.
We pay nothing.
I think Barb was just saying the budget should be cut back.
Well, I know that, but.
That's hard to tell because.
We don't know.
January through June is going to be the same as you, because we're on Walmart plan, it's a grandfather plan, so January through June, I can't change. So the rest of the year is, is a guess, so.
We could certainly, we could certainly plug those 2018 numbers in.
But I don't.
But you can plug in the 2018 number, just see what it looks like.
Yeah.
I mean, do we have 2019 numbers in here and then we got them inflated to 2020?
Yep, that's what we normally do with the insurance.
Well, then at least go to 2019.
I mean, we could.
2016. Well.
So we'll put the 2018 numbers in there. I'm just letting you know that those may change.
Well, I don't know what for us to come up with, but I'm just trying to, you guys start some.
Highway and street administration, we've got 51,000 in for continuation somewhat of the Park Maple study. The county is applying for a grant.
Yes.
From the feds. So this $51,000 would be our share of the grant application preparation. And this would be for the extension of Park Street from Sioux to Split Rock. Now, the chances of it funding this year is.
Pretty slim, but HDR is under contract to put the application together. And so the county's paying that first 40,000 to put the application together, but along with that application, they have to do look at cost benefit analysis. And our portion of that section really helps the overall project. And if part of that application has three environmental studies that need to be done along with like a 30% preliminary design. So that 51% would be our portion of the elementary for the environmental studies and preliminary design.
So and we're interested in doing that because if we could get up to how much of the extension paid for by a grant?
80%.
80%.
Would be huge for us.
Okay, I'm kind of back to the insurance because my intention is not to have the employees pick up 17%. My intention is to look at other plans to see if there is a way to compromise and maybe have a different plan if they pick up a little bit and we can.
That's why we're going to inform that.
Yep.
Right. But then what numbers do we want in the budget?
Well, see, that's, that's, at this point in time, it doesn't really matter what we put in the budget. We could put zero in the budget and everything would balance. We'd have a great looking budget, but when it comes time at the end of the year to take a look at the insurance, we're going to amend the budget. We could put a 20% increase.
But if we lowered what Barb suggested, we could amend it once we find out.
Correct.
We can amend it. Yes.
Until what point in the budget? Like, this affects what January 1st?
We have to adopt the budget the first meeting in September, or the first reading the first meeting in September. We have to have it done by the end of September.
Well, maybe they keep it at 2019, but just don't gross it up.
You know, if we negotiate, if we negotiate, you know, save the money.
Yeah, but when it comes to the police department and all of a sudden, we have a budget and we better cut a million bucks because we're over budget, everybody's going to get paid back. And maybe we don't have to get paid back because we have to bring in the real numbers and that's my, because we never spend more than what we have in the budget.
We can amend it.
You can amend it, you can always amend it. That's one of the things the league is going to work on with the budget, why do we have to be, have it done in September? So that's one of the things that hopefully the league will, will put forward at the state legislature in the upcoming session is give us some extra time, give us to the end of the year.
Well, is it more committed to that end of the business? Would that look at like what we would save in the city for, you know, if employees gave us 5% of their healthcare? Because really, it's unbelievable they spend at 100% paid. I mean, that's, that's amazing. That's unheard of.
No, it's not.
There is also.
I look at other cities and.
They're also a buying period for three years. So to say it's 100% paid is, it's not quite.
But the cost.
For the first three years, they do pay 75, 25.
A family cover.
The first three years.
Which is something we should probably review as well.
Now, it is, yes, still, they're, they're 20-year employees. That's a pretty good.
Family, if they pay something like 100% in one year, they're going to. There isn't need for this to be an insurance, so they.
Right.
I'm just looking at ways to move on. Can we see what it saves? I mean, just to kind of.
So, but that's what.
Yeah.
We want to form an insurance committee and actually look at all of that and do all of that work to then present to the employees, this is what we've come up with. The, the problem we had last year is it seemed as though, and I'm brand new to the council, like when we started having these discussions, that was at my first meeting. Well, to me, it sounded like we asked them to change right now. Well, that's not, right? When you're asking somebody to change doctors, change providers, change health systems, you can't just tell them, you have to do a two.
No, you have to have a, a track. Yes.
Correct. So that hopefully is what is going to happen this year.
Could they even do something like a grandfather thing and put a higher as of this date past this, then go on to new one?
You can, you, you can, but if I've got two people doing the same job, one's on this plan and one's on this plan and not getting the same benefits, doesn't really bode well for working relations.
True, I guess, but if somebody else can here put in.
So.
But I understand that.
Yep, so we'll get, we'll get this, yeah, we'll get this committee working again and start working on that probably in September.
Okay, where am I at?
Dump truck. We've got the 05, that's up for 03, that's up for replacement.
03, Rob?
03. I made it last this long.
Rob.
16 years.
Rob, come on.
And he's complaining about cars that are two years old.
Come on, buddy.
How many miles?
103.
Yeah.
I would venture it's around 80 something thousand. We have, somewhere between, it depends on the winter because a lot of time there to use for the summer.
Yeah.
Yep. I can find that out.
Paved streets, we've transferred a lot of that over to the street maintenance fund, correct?
Yeah.
Snow removal, we hope we don't spend any of it. And that would include a plow for a one ton, if I remember right. Storm drainage, we've got a couple of things in there. 100,000, we need to do some, still do some improvements out at Bethany Drainage and/or the Bluffs to clean those out. Phase two of Redwood Storm, if you remember, the Redwood Storm Sewer Project that we did this year is, is the first phase up to Ninth Street, and then we need to extend it up into Magnolia, Maywood area. So the 370 is complete, is completing all of it. We can probably get by with doing a little bit less than that and extending it into a third or fourth phase.
Once you go into those phases, that should stop.
It, well, it should reduce it significantly as to what's, because right now we've still just got the two, two inlets on Ninth. Once we extend up into the Maywood area, that'll stop that water from getting on to Ninth. So that's the plan. And then 100,000 in for possible zero escaping ideas. Sidewalks and crosswalks, again, $100,000 for possible bike plan of which the.
80%?
80% again?
No.
No?
This is the chat funding one.
Okay.
This is the one we would pay 56%.
Okay.
Right? Oh, the bike plan.
Yeah, the bike plan.
Oh, yeah, that's FBO funds.
Okay.
80%.
30,000 for sidewalk repairs. Um, thirty thousand for sidewalk repairs. Sidewalks and crosswalks are a new category this budget. That's why there's no money in- or nothing spent before. And then, North Split Rock Boulevard Grant, eight hundred thousand.
That should be one-twenty-four.
Okay.
That's the town funding.
Yes. So, we'll- we'll adjust those numbers down according to the grant funds. Eight hundred thousand is the total cost over the next three to five years.
That's phase one.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was everything. So, that'll get adjusted down quite a bit.
This is from Redwood. This is from Redwood Boulevard.
This would be along Split Rock on the west side of the road from the Catholic Church all the way to those hotels.
And that's gonna be a new bike path?
Yes, shared use path.
Shared use path.
Bikes and pedestrians.
And trucks.
Yeah, they may be.
So, they-
Oh, they share it?
Yeah.
Maybe.
Yeah.
But so, even on the church, I think churches were, it didn't have to be a sidewalk.
Oh, yeah. If- if- Yeah, we don't exempt churches, nonprofits from paying a sidewalk cost. This, we don't- you typically don't charge the adjacent property owners because they're wider than normal. They're a trail, for lack of a better term. So, we do it.
Okay.
Yep.
So, this will connect to Holly?
Yes.
Like that on Holly?
Yep.
And then run all the way down to the hotels?
Yeah.
Are you- does that mean they're building it up to go over all the drainage that's happening in that area?
Yeah, that's part of the design.
Yeah.
We'll be reshaping those ditches.
Maintaining it, is it?
Nope.
Reshaping them.
I know, but it's gonna have one point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sanitation, we've got weed spray. Transit. Uh, that's what- this is what we submitted to the state for funding. Maybe we'll get more than we asked for again. Animal control is our contract with the Humane Society in Sioux Falls. West Nile's mosquito spraying, which has been pretty well this year. I'm kind of surprised.
I guess there's actually too much water in this.
Okay.
The warm, maybe shallow, there's too much water, it gets too much.
Good.
That's fantastic.
Yes. On page twenty-five, senior citizens. We pay six thousand dollars to VFW for the senior citizens to have their Thursday get-togethers over there. The rec center is our summer rec program and we'll get a report probably for the next meeting.
Are there still a lot of kids that use that? Is that what reports?
Yeah. It'll show usage. Yep. And then, it's coupled- It's coupled with the schools. I shouldn't say it's- it's not formally coupled, but with the school's free lunch program, I think has been pretty successful. They were telling me what the numbers were for the free lunch. It was like, holy crap. Five hundred plus a day, roughly. Yep. Swimming pool. Yay.
No, I'm just there today. It's horrible.
Well-
It's the memories I've created with kids there. I love it.
We-
Turns out we have lots of public waterways now that you can create.
I just say kids going there, right?
We've included in there about a hundred and twenty-five thousand for design of the proposed pool improvements, whatever those are, the splash pad slides, et cetera. Talk about that a little bit further down. Fifty thousand dollars for slides. That might be something we want to take a look at if we're going to plan a major upgrade. I'm assuming these slides are budgeted here, just kind of replace what we've got.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, the place the same size is smaller.
So, if we're going to put in bigger slides at some point in the near future with the splash pad upgrade, do we really want to spend fifty thousand to replace this? It might just be better for two thousand twenty to take those slides out if they can't be repaired and then put a sign up saying, "Coming soon, new slides."
Are they dangerous?
Are you- are you on your to the old brands and everything, that all together are seeing cameras?
Which isn't uncommon in pools.
I think we left the slides in there because we were not sure where the council was in regards to going to get the improvements out of the pool. But we know if you get improvements out of the pool, that we're gonna have the slides.
Correct.
But we were trying to gauge where you guys were at on that.
At this point in time, what this budget includes is design in two thousand twenty, construction to start August two thousand twenty-one. We could- we could speed that up if you want to, to do design with construction to start on whatever the improvements are next August after the pool closes.
So, the pool, the improvements that we're making, the pool are not included in the Aspen Park master plan?
No, they are.
They are, but it's never-
Yeah.
It's never priced.
They're part of the overall-
Mm-hmm.
It's part of the overall site and it's a pretty big part.
The Aspen Park Master Plan, the company, ISG, just did not look at the pool. They did not recommend any of those upgrades. Those upgrades all came from the company that we work, Council Hunzucker. Because they had already started the splash pad study. So, all they really did is mirror what I- they, Council Hunzucker, had and just put it in the plan with, they expanded the deck a little bit, the concrete deck a little bit, just because that's the feedback that they heard. But other than that, they- they did not look at the design of the pool, what would spend. They did not do that.
Okay. Or, uh, I have a pool. I would certainly favor what Brian suggests, one of the speeded up, speeded up, take up that fifteen.
Well, I don't want to claim that. Somebody- somebody else mentioned it to me.
I like to do that, too, because I spent my summer days there.
How much would it cost?
One point six million, I think, was the cost estimate for the bigger slides, the zero-depth entry splash pad, kiddie pool renovations, and whatever else Councilman Hunzucker recommended, the increased pool deck.
So, the discussion at Park Board was, we have about five hundred thousand for capital projects. And so, here we were gonna take this hundred thirty for the design. And then, the thought was every year of our five hundred thousand, we could take that out of that to do the, to cover the bond, the debt. So, like, probably a hundred twenty-five thousand. So, we give up other- other capital projects so that we could do something with the pool. Because we get the most of like the bulk of the pool. And we can't do a seven million dollar project, so we got this one.
And what's-
That's somebody talking about, I mean, I'm gonna try to push something through on this pool project and I gotta talk to these guys to get some cover of a lot of money or get some money and stuff. But I'd like to, my client would be the person's, or have to be the first part of a park, not a Aspen Park proposal. Uh, it's gonna be expensive as hell, but, uh- So, when we talk about the whole Aspen Park, is that something we're gonna look to do pieces of over twenty-five year period?
Yes.
Are we gonna pass a vote and do the whole thing and buy it?
Um, it's- 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 The way I look at it, uh, what they indicated to us at the open house, the city's portion of the project, the parking, the roadway, the utilities, uh, we're talking about ten to twelve million. Total cost for what you see on that piece of paper is probably twenty-five plus. So, we can only afford to do so much with that Aspen Park. That's- that's a blueprint for the next twenty to thirty years. And the associations are really gonna have to step up. If they want a hockey rink, they do the hockey rink. If they want an extra field, then baseball and softball's gonna have to step up. If they want a soccer field down there, soccer's gonna have to do the fundraising for that stuff.
Well, they have a plan.
But we have a plan. What we wanted the plan for was, what we've done in the past is, hey, let's do a field, so they just plopped one down.
Isn't it amazing, Rob, that I mean, it's a super good one. That was all-
We actually planned that.
You guys did plan that and then organization got the one.
Yep. So, this is a blueprint to lay out Aspen Park for the next twenty, thirty years. But if-
But Timmy, your point, you can't- you can't set all of the capital park money at Aspen. You know, we got all of these other parks, too, and trails and all that kind of stuff. So, we're trying to, you know, have a fine line of Aspen is our biggest park, but we also have to take in the other parks. So, anyway, so, yes, to answer your question, the Park Board is committed to, uh, it's getting out turned out. Park Board is committed to the pool improvements, but probably in that set of splash pads, change the terminology. Just as a way to try to get some emphasis there, but not right.
Yeah.
On the survey, yeah, on the surveys that come to the board.
Yeah, what's interesting is, if you notice in the survey a couple of times and also on- on social media, they say Sibley's doing this, Sibley did this, Sibley's got a great pool. I went and looked at Sibley's pool. It's nothing- it's nothing more than what we're proposing, which they're calling inadequate. It's a zero-depth entry pool. Uh, they got a- they do have a rock climbing wall, which we probably put in. But the renovations Sibley did and what we're proposing are almost identical. But yet, we're inadequate. But anyway. Um, we got that fifty thousand down in the capital outlay accumulation account for splash pad. So, that'll come into play in our discussions a little bit. Parks Department. Um- You got something different?
Well, the next page. This page is really just kind of turned into the-
Uh, O and M. The first page is O and M.
Can't really change much on that.
But Devin keeps asking for more and more stuff, so we had to add a second page.
Did we- did we add in another staff person?
I did not.
So, here's the, that's what we're gonna need, is another staff person in particular, like, you know, getting all that. Those trees are gonna have to come down, the chipping and all that kind of stuff. So, uh, we just need to think of that for that. Is Devin here close?
Yeah. We're very close. I have a lot of other things I have.
Oh, okay.
Um, I don't know how to treat removals on Aspen Park. Uh, I'm looking for those small, uh, spring roll slams anyway, so it's just not now. Next year, draft, or pressure.
So, the numbers that you see in that second column is a recommendation from the Park Board. Restroom building. And then, list one is parking lot repairs and the pathway. The pathway runs down the center from Field A to the north pod of Fields and-
Julian Pressler, softball is working a grant for that trail. Uh, they don't know that she hasn't come along, if she's gonna get, or if she'll get awarded until this fall. But she seemed pretty confident, so that's the number that would cost, uh, and whatever she gets.
Which number was that?
The thirty thousand under list one says path.
Where is this one?
It shows down underneath the-
Okay. I got you.
Yep. List two, a three-quarter ton truck, a half-ton truck, a mower. Hoist and the paints. The hoist is for the- the shop so that we would have a-
Servicing mowers, something like that.
So that we can- they're a little safer if it's a certified hoist. Not that we care if they get squished.
If we take out the slides, then that needs to go over to someplace else because otherwise we're down fifty thousand. Last year, we were at five hundred thousand, one hundred. Plus my nails.
So, that's on- that's on the equipment list or capital outlay stuff for the park, including redoing the fishing pier, hopefully. And then, the surfacing of Stone Ridge, we'd be looking at doing, uh, we've got the AstroTurf out at Sunrise Park. We'd be looking at putting in either poured-in-place or the tiles.
Poured-in-place.
Instead of the sand, surfacing.
Got a Cadillac taste for the Chevy budget.
So-
Well, it's a standalone.
And I would anticipate that the surfacing will probably be going to all of the parks eventually, whether or not one park a year, but to comply with ADA and it's a little safer than sand, what we've got there now. So, hopefully, we'll determine which is the best surface. Uh, forestry and nursery. We've got our tree trimming that we do. We do- we do a third of the town each year. Ash tree treatment, tags, grinding. That is for our trees, not necessarily private trees. We've got sixty-five thousand included in there for chipping. It's probably not gonna survive. I think, we looked it up, Sukup came in the last time and chipped, I think, for thirty-five hundred bucks, five thousand. So, that might be what we do in the future if we start looking at tree piles again, is bringing them in. We were very fortunate this year because we got to haul all of our tree pile out to a contractor's site for free. And then, he burned it, or will burn it for us. It burned already?
Yeah, it was on fire when the truck was hauling.
Oh, okay.
So, it's gone. They had to fill it in last Friday.
So, that probably won't be available to us in the future.
Over on our twenty-five loads.
You said I was in the state, I need to. You know, if you say I was coming back and then, uh, yeah, I was like, what is happening?
It was our trees.
That's awesome.
Same, right? Torus circle.
Yep. Uh, libraries. Who is the library rep? You are? That's right. If the school wants to do something, we'll have a meeting. So, that's just- just in case. Uh, economic development, that is Dennis's salary, wages. That's a new- a new department this year as well. Promoting the city. Um, we've got the flower baskets in there, decorations, and electricity, I'm assuming.
No, not.
No? What's the utilities?
Zero.
Is it? Oh, it is. I'm off a- I'm off a- Page. Uh, page thirty is debt service. We talked about the operating transfer out. That's about the only thing that's negotiable on that page.
I don't know, a backup for things, where is the financial support that we give to the chairman?
Oh, that's coming up.
Coming up.
Third penny sales tax fund. It's a separate fund. It's on page thirty-one.
I just thought, going to the city, I thought we'd give it to the chairman.
Nope.
Ryan, on that transfer process, does Tom come every year and get his pitch?
No.
If someone wants to talk to him?
We certainly can. I mean, he'll contact- he doesn't come every year to the council, but he's certainly contacted staff just about every year. Yeah.
This is my little word about this. I think it'd be nice to have conversation with them because I know with talking with people I know, community rep center is something that it relates everyone to the council. They would be making a peace kind of with or something like that. But building something here, I think it's worth having a conversation.
Mm-hmm.
If he's willing to build it, I know I have prepared a couple of next door to me. They would love something like that, and then I have, rather than the same issue like this. And I think it's just an act of community that is, I think, worth the conversation of, um, whether we go down that road or not.
Nope, we've- we've had those discussions with him and when we give him our offer.
Is that why, you know?
So, this, and I would agree with, so do you- do you present him an offer of what we're looking for?
Yeah.
Or does he just come to us and say?
No, he says, "Hey, I'm interested in talking with you guys again in spring." Usually, it's about February, March when he'll contact us. Uh, we'd- he's been very open, saying, "Hey, we'll do anything from an affiliates agreement to- to full-blown management." We've explained to him that we can't sell it to him. Uh, we've got some lease issues with the bank financing currently. So, those two are kind of off the table. But, uh, operations agreement, where they were coming and operated for us, um, to an affiliates agreement, we've laid out what we think we would like to see in it. And then, that's about as far as the conversation goes.
Do you think we have a committee or something? I mean, because he said five years when he was here, so maybe we want different things now. I mean, it's all in council except for our, what do we want? I mean, he's talking about doubling golfers, bringing in extra money and maybe a little off to catch pairs. I mean, I guess I'd be interested in hearing what I do. I mean, he's talking about doubling golfers, bringing in extra money, and maybe a little off the couch there, so I mean, I guess I'd be interested in hearing what ideas you have, as well as just what we've looked at in the past.
I agree with that too, I think if we do a pool here, I mean, indoor pool, I know we're gonna make a cool start, but then I think if, I work in Brookings, we had indoor pool in our high school, if there's something that you could work with him, then we could also offer that as a high school class, if this whole district would want that, or really, hey, Monday for Friday, things out, we're, we can do that.
We've, we've, we've had those conversations with the school.
Oh, they want it.
School hates it.
No, see, I want it, because I have just, I know with insurance, I don't have that yet.
Yeah, we, you know, if you look at it just from a number standpoint, we, we lose a hundred-plus thousand with an outdoor pool that's open three months out of the year.
I know, but why do we create such wonderful memories?
I know.
That's what I gotta say.
If, if we, if we could afford another four hundred thousand in losses in the pool, we'll do it.
But why don't we host a golf course?
Well, that's the, that's the question. But no, we can certainly sit down with Tom again, you know, fall, winter, and see what he's thinking.
Be excited.
I, I would, I think we need to get through, get to develop first numbers first, before we have some more discussions of it. Yes, I do think we probably can get that.
Not, that transfer will change.
Yeah.
We'll adjust on the next one. This is a overall requested, this is what the department has requested, this is a...
Do you have a final number until?
No.
December?
No. And, and, you know, getting, getting back to Tom, I don't see him changing his proposal much, and quite frankly, at the end of his proposal, the city would walk away with basically nothing from the golf course.
Well, let's, let's talk, first, this is, you know, this is...
Um, page thirty-one is the third penny sales tax fund, out of which we pay our Seacock dues, Makita dues, the municipal league dues, the chamber dues. We've got two increases this year, requests, one from the chamber, and then one from the Brandon Development Foundation for the expansion of the Rollbang Industrial Park. Now, if you remember, we're projecting about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in revenue in the third penny sales tax fund, so we'll, we'll need to make some, some changes to the request for expenditures to match that. Two twenty is what we're projecting at third penny.
What if you funded all of this, you could get it from someplace else?
Yeah, it'd be general fund.
So I would just say on that chamber, the amount of that increase, it's a minimum for itself, but none of us end up going towards, uh, the college, it's always go towards that, uh, promoting. And Paul, you just asked, you know, the development foundation, we can back that off now, time just up, lower, because I think about six percent, if you wanna back, back down to...
Yeah, why don't you give me a number with the new, with the new rate?
Time to back down to five percent.
Don't.
No. Okay. Yeah.
We don't think, we're hoping to not extend it any way, but we can just take it somewhere, and I had this...
That would be the...
That's the idea.
That would be awesome.
Mm-hmm.
A little plus then, right?
Okay. Street maintenance fund, as we talked about the other day, we'll bump that up to two dollars per linear foot, which will generate about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars in revenue, so that pays for all of our patching, paintings. We're not proposing a slurry seal project for next year, instead, a Holly Aspen joint repair project, which we've talked about for a couple of years, even though they say...
We should, and that'll give us a chance to get ahead of our street maintenance that needs to help, needs to go before the slurry seal, so we're not on such a crunch time, trying to get it on, on, before they get here. Which, right now, there's really no other communities with a whole lot of concrete work, so right now, we're thinking that the joint repair project will cost between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand, but we'll see what those other communities come up with. This estimate's based off of this year's bits.
You said by raising that assessment, if you recreate six hundred and fifty thousand, instead of what we're at?
Five seventy-eight, five seventy...
Seventy or five eighty?
Yeah, five eighty, round numbers.
Are we still reasonable, like, to, you know, raise that amount?
Um, no, we're, we're, we're probably on the high end for that. The other side of that, though, is, if you look at other communities, their tax rates for their general, their property taxes are higher than ours, so there's an offset there. You know, if, if you look at our tax rate, and I should look at them again, we're the third lowest in the county. I mean, I think we're, we're just above Crooks and... I can't remember the other community. We'll do that. So, other people get, other communities our size get more sales tax revenue, they also have higher tax rates for property taxes, and the only thing I can attribute that to, and I'm not sure why, is that we're a young community, since we weren't incorporated until seventy-three. So when they froze the property tax levy in nineties, mid-nineties, it hurt us. So our, our property tax levy isn't keeping up with the population and the demands, it's a bad thing with levy limits. Okay. That was quick. Uh, we'll just, we'll just get through maybe construction projects here, the, the next couple of things are, are the bid conference center, that's debt service. The STIP funding, if, if you remember, we talked about, we anticipate, we hope not, but we're anticipating the Holly Main Street project not being done this year, and we may have some expenditures next year. So that's that million. And then we've got debt, the debt service that we've got, which there's no changes to. Page thirty-four, we get into the Holly Dogwood Main Street project, which is the million fifty that we just talked about. Core, core reconstruction, phase one, professional services of three hundred thousand.
Yeah, still working on that.
Yep.
Construction numbers on that.
Correct. So we won't have, well, hopefully, HDR will give us the construction cost estimate for phase one fairly soon. And then Rushmore Project, phase one, is professional services, design on that, for anticipated of those improvements taking place in two thousand twenty-one. Water conservation community is just wages, we've got the other stuff in, built into the water fund. Do you wanna stop there, or do you want, because I see eyes glazing over. Water, sewer, golf course, basically, and electric fund, which doesn't take long. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Um... Yeah, traditionally, we try to do it on the off Mondays, which won't work this year, so the off Tuesdays, and we could do it on the off Thursdays, so that would be August eighth or August thirteenth for the next one. Probably go through the water sewer golf course, proprietary ones.
I'd really like to be here when we start, right, if we're gonna have to peer down, it'll be one point four dollars.
Yep. Which I think is relatively easy, quite frankly. I'm not too worked up over it.
My part of the... Hey, I have worked really, really hard, completely, so I'm not gonna get that budget up, that I'm on a problem.
So there you go.